Apparently Dick is coming to us from a media center.
Now, I'm in the, in the office. I'm next, right next door to Molly and, and Robin.
Dick's coming to us from a storage closet.
Yeah, sure.
That used to be a computer lab. Inside joke there, I guess.
Dick works fast. I'm gonna mute because my husband's on.
Molly and Robin, can we get the agenda up? Ah, thank you very much. Okay, as is our custom, if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible liberty and justice alone.
Thank you. Okay, Molly and Robin, any public comments?
No, sir.
The next item is approval of the October
You have to approve the agenda.
Ah, thank you.
I move we approve the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Robin. No public comments?
There's no committee meeting minutes for, for this meeting.
Then we get right into the heart of the meeting. Responses to, first, I, I compiled the agenda based on all the feedback I got. I'm not sure if we can get through it all, but I, I want to remind the committee members, our mandate is OE seventeen. And I think we need to not drift away from that too much because, well, one thing, when we, when we make requests, it requires some, some effort on the port, on the part of the staff. So I think we need to, we need to remain cognizant of that fact. And also, we need to stay focused on results. So let's, as we move forward, let's, let's try not to drift away from that because there's all these things each one of us would really like to know more about. And perhaps we can do it in another format other than the, the Technology Committee meeting. Maybe we could, you know, have, have private meetings with some of the staff or, or something. But I just, the, the size of our agenda just caused me to think about it. So, but if we can just stay focused on our mandate, which is that, that OE and results of functions, then I, I think we can come back a little bit more, a little bit more to the reasonable side. All right, with that little lecture, we can start on this. Is this Mark or Tanya who's gonna do this?
Ingrid's hands up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ingrid?
Well, just in response to what you're saying, sometimes I'm throwing out things I think that weren't discussion because I'm having discussions and they don't all have to be on one agenda. Like, I don't think they're time sensitive. So if we don't get to them, it's fine. But, you know, I'll have a conversation with someone. I'm like, that's something I could take to the Technology Committee for further discussion, but it doesn't have to all be one meeting.
Right. Yeah. And some of those things, you might be able to get through a phone call with Mark. I, I, I don't know. That's up to you. I, I'm gonna keep making the agenda based on what y'all sent me. Because, because we're a team and that's how we do it. But just keep in mind that if we can do it quicker with a phone call or a specific email, that would probably be a good idea. All right. Uh, Computer Labs, these are, these are the items that we had requested a follow-up on. So is it Mark? Is Mark on?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Is this you?
Uh, yes. I provided two, oh my God, I got my, hold on one second. Um, I provided two documents that, um, oh, sorry, excuse me. One document, which was a survey out to the principals to how they use their labs, the amount of time. Uh, we also asked for, uh, what their vision of the future for those spaces are and what they thought would be some great new programs coming into their schools. And, uh, the feedback we got is in the, the attached document. It varies widely from building to building, but, um, I think it's all useful.
Robin, it is, Robin, it is one PDF document. So if you scroll down, I think you'll, they're in order based on the number, the question numbers here.
Is that me?
Ingrid, did you have something? Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Am I getting feedback? I just got, okay. When did, when did this get put in Board Docs? Because I checked this morning. I'm just, I feel like I'm looking at it on the fly. I didn't see it this morning.
Uh, I can't answer that. Only Robin could answer that, I think.
It was put in Board Docs this morning.
So do we need time to digest this and push it into another agenda? Or can we quickly go through it? Is there, are there highlights on here, Mark, that you want to draw our attention to?
Um, I guess the best one would be the final column, um, which is how the principals envision their spaces and their buildings.
You know, I see if, oh, sorry, I'll raise my hand.
Go ahead.
Um, I see a theme that, just very quickly looking at it, and we had talked about this a little bit at the last meeting, that of re-envisioning Computer Labs as sort of STEM activity maker spaces, innovation lab, that kind of thing. Um, which I think is absolutely the right way to go. Um, I have a couple of specific questions. You know, a couple of people said they don't have space for a computer lab, which I thought was interesting. Um, but I can see robotics, I see STEM activities, and I don't know if Mark's looked at this and has an idea of what would be needed to, to have that kind of conversion.
Um, we have multiple options. There is a lot of space in most of our media centers. Um, and if we converted to more of a innovative, innovation space, um, we wouldn't have the physical desktops. We could possibly have a cart with some high-end laptops. Um, we could break out areas um, for, um, stuff like 3D printers and items like that. Um, uh, I would prefer to have, uh, more direction from the school and, uh, Dr. Stratos for an overarching plan for it. And I know her team has already been working on this. We've, uh, talked some with Karen Gilbert um, and the Kate side, and she envisions a pipeline from basically kindergarten through high school, um, with computer innovations.
Did you want to follow up on that, Mary?
The comment I had shared, we had a meeting with Mark and Colleen earlier in the week, and actually a few times. I, I had retrofit a few school media centers so that we provide opportunity to still have text-rich print. We provide opportunity to have electronic, um, reading kiosk areas. We provide areas where students were able to have super high-end computers when they, so they could do some creative work. I'm trying not to say the Apple word, Mark, um, because I know we could do it on a Windows base now. Um, we provided 3D printers there. It, it was a work environment for all, but still recognizing that the teachers like to have their sacred place as well as a workplace. So that's kind of what we were having conversation of being a little more contemporary, still meeting, recognizing we need to have books. We need to provide for those readers who want to touch as someone as myself. But then where my brother is the electronic guru at reading for years, he would just come and be at a high top and sit, sit off an iPad and pull up and utilize, you know, our, our free subscriptions. Or myself wanting to go in and design something on a high-end computer and be able to design something and be able to print it, and there will be probably a fee attached to that, but being creative with our space that is a learning place during the daytime, or features coming in and utilizing that, the media center as well as part of their instructional lesson that has been approved. So there's some creative approaches we could do to take out of just a, a room with shelves, and I mean it respectively.
Now, a couple of, I'll let Ingrid go, but a couple of times you said media center, and I think we're talking about Computer Labs, right?
Well, Mrs. Tribbinger, I'm thinking like an integration of the two. Not just leaving a, an isolated room in, in the building that's a computer lab, but we have a foundational place that was still hardwired in the event of emergencies for testing, right? Because there's always that backup, that principal part of me always stays it. I still want to keep some hardwired area. But if, to me, a media center was always that place that I created that backup. It's utilized for credit recovery in the afternoon for my athletics, is utilized as a tutoring place in the afternoon for all groups. On the weekends, it could operate at the high school for credit recovery and tutoring programs. That it's a learning hub. It also assures greater security and safety when we're doing things after school as well. I said the library does not close at dismissal. It's a learning hub. So I, I'm seeing it a little differently, not just using our tech labs.
Good. That, that certainly adjusts my output. Uh, Ingrid?
Yeah, I was, when I did a little poking around about this, I think the key word is modularity. Like modular furniture, you can rearrange it for different uses. I also think that we should not get completely away from hardwired computers, especially at the high school level um, because of cybersecurity issues. And sometimes you need that, you know, hardwired laptop or laptop, even though we have the one-to-one devices. Um, so I think that there's a lot of really exciting possibilities. The other thing I noticed, my quick survey of this information is there seems to be a difference between elementary school, middle school, and high school. And we shouldn't have a one-size-fits-all sort of solution.
Dick?
So I guess that was more of a comment than a question.
Yeah.
I took it as a comment. Dick?
Yeah, this is, um, I'm thinking along the same line as Dr. Stratos. When I look at usage of different areas of schools that I visit, I see Computer Labs that are empty. And I see media centers that are underutilized.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm looking at space, and I'm looking at classroom space. And I, I see that the media center, which was the library, and I think libraries are dinosaurs that are, that will be going away. Uh, and I really can see the media center being the hub for reference work, for higher technology applications for students with, like, say, 3D printers and, and higher-end coding and so on, it could be done there. And, and that's why I brought up at last night's meeting about having the media center be a topic of discussion to the board as how it's, how it should be used in the future. Uh, I see lots and lots of books, and I will be willing to bet that very, very few get checked out and checked in. And I don't see periodicals, and I think periodicals are, are critical, but I get all my periodicals now online. Uh, and so I'm, I'm not sure that the paper-based anything is going to be the future. And to build anything that's going to support paper-based or gang computers, like the computer lab is, that was something that we looked at in Classroom Twenty-One in the nineties. We thought that's what classrooms were going to look like. Would be desktops side by side in a, in a, in a row. And that's not how we teach and use laptops and so on. So it's just a bigger discussion.
Um, so what is the next step on this? And, and who has the lead? Is it you, Mary? Do you have the lead on this?
It's actually a combination, a combination of myself and working with our tech teams and facilities. Um, I'm very much a believer in, in a creative environment, even to the point that media centers provide a gallery walk of artwork. You know, that's also a place where a significant amount of school have parents come in. So I, it's a shift of mindset. We may have to bring some of our media specialists in for input so they feel like they have a voice. That's something that they've been part of creating. Uh, because there's also that sacredness of the books, right? And again, it's a different mindset as well, Mrs. Tribbinger. I think it has to be a balance of both. Age-appropriate, as, um, Mrs. Boatright brought forward, is not one-size-fits-all. So maybe an integrated panel and discussion, and bring additional people to the table.
It sounds like you're in the lead, Mary.
I'm a guest here, Tanya.
Uh, yeah, I know, I know.
You're doing a great job.
Kind of reason.
Okay. But we, we, we could put something together, Mrs. Tribbinger, like that. I really would like to get the voice of the schools and, and have multiple grade bands involved um, with educational tech and tech as well. So I could work with Colleen and her team because we do, we do provide a stipend for one of our ed tech, um, leaders to be our point of contact with a media specialist.
Yeah, I'm just looking for the person that we're gonna poke in a month and say, what's going on? That's you. Okay.
Thank you.
Ingrid?
Okay, sorry about the dog here. Um, I actually think it would go facilities, tech, instruction. Because I think the first thing you gotta do is the, the, the key thing we're talking about here now is reimagining what the space could be, how technology could support that, and then what instruction you would bring into that space. I think some of these spaces will not be with instructional services. You could have other uses. So I, I actually would suggest putting up facilities as a first look at this.
Well, I, I agree, I agree with your dog. Um, I, I really think curriculum should lead it. As you know, we, we had this discussion on other topics. Uh, I think that the technology and facilities are there to support a need. And the need would be coming from, um, from the schools and from Mary. But, you know, this is a, as, as mentioned, this is a rethinking of how we teach and what we teach, and what we can teach. Um, so I, I really think that would be the lead, but, um, you know, we've had this discussion already. So I'm gonna bring Dick in to break the tie.
Oh, I, I think it's a lead academics. I think we have to look at how it's used, what the, what the requirements are and from the user, the end user, which is our students and our teachers. And so I, I think that has to, that has to lead the effort.
He broke the tie.
I know you're not gonna give up on this one.
No, no, I, I don't disagree. I was just throwing in my impression of it. If I was doing it like as queen of the universe, I would first talk to the facilities and see what's possible. And then talk to technology and see what's possible, and then say, okay, here are options. Uh, Mrs. Dr. Stratos, what, what can you do with it? But, but that's just, that's just a different way of thinking of it. And if, if Dr. Stratos wants to take the lead, I am, I'm always happy to follow her.
So
This is an age-old thing about technology enabling things versus This is an age-old thing about technology enabling things versus technologies supporting needs. And this discussion, you and I are having a discussion that's been had for years. Both sides are legitimate concerns. Mary, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, no, but just two quick points. One, I would love that we do it together. It's no one taking the lead, and I mean that wholeheartedly with our membership of our board representation. She should be part of a voice at development. You're another pulse to the community, but also amongst us here at in senior leadership. I have to share that we work to be very close at integrating what we want to do. And I would, I don't want to speak for facilities or for Robert, but he would turn around and say to me, Stratos, what do you see? So that I could turn around and make it happen. And that's where it's dangerous because I'm gonna say I want north light. I want cool light coming in, you know, so it's gonna be at a whole different level. So he has to bring me in a little more, Mrs. Boatright. But I have to, we've really developed a pretty much of a platform of speaking with one another. So I think that's important to share amongst us. And Mark could probably say hay or nay because, yeah, it's, yeah. But I think survey, our media specialists would like to survey our educators. But and you brought up the critical one as well, our students, the utilization, where do they see? So I actually put that in the notes as well. Colleen's taking notes. Mrs. Stribinger suggested a big notice.
So the next step is for the team. I'm sorry, Tanya?
Um, I, we, I think we already have a few examples actually of some changes that were made to our media centers and modernization. And one, I know that Carol Crutchfield in particular has made an effort in, in many of our schools to upgrade the media centers. And I can think of one very good example, and I think Beaufort High School is that, that example. You have the high top, you have charging stations right there. You have different segments of the, of the media center. And so that is one space that has been upgraded and those have been budgeted for in the 8% fund. So as you, as you begin to see in the spring that those media center upgrades are on that list, they continue to be each year. And that's because they have a program of modernizing each one of our media centers. So it's great that we're, you know, integrating academics. It's probably just time to, you know, make sure that the continued plan that we have aligns with the academic plan. But I know that they've been working on modernizing many of them already. So, but things have changed in the last few years from a technology standpoint, so we might need to make some updates to it.
Okay, well, then I win because she's in facilities and she's already done some work. So no matter what you do, facilities took the lead.
You are, you're still the queen of the uni-
Queen of the universe.
Okay, so that's the next step. Get back to the agenda.
I think that's an interesting topic, Dick, though. I'm glad you brought it up. I didn't, I didn't really think of the possibilities when you first mentioned it. I was like, oh, but this is an interesting, bigger, bigger picture issue.
Yes, yes, it is. And they're really fundamental things that we're discussing here is really fundamental. You know, think like who leads, you know? Who creates the need and who does the support? Those are, those are critical things to get straight. And it is really refreshing, Tanya, Mark and Mary. Because I've been on this board for a little while. And this, this is the first time I've actually seen people who want to cooperate. And it's, and it's great because that's how you get ahead. That's, you know, that's how you make progress is everybody pulling on the rope and, and trying to get the, you know, get it done. So I applaud you all for, for keeping that in the forefront. All right, our next item. Is this it? School admin checklist? Who's got, who's this one?
Yes, we were asked about the device rollout and device collection checklist. And here is an example of what Colleen and I worked with the principals on before school starts. We get this out to all the school administrators so they can work with their in-school teams to get personnel together to help roll out all the devices to the children. It's very critical that we work with the school staff because we do not have the manpower to do it by ourselves.
Mr. Stribinger, I think this is in response to some of my ongoing questions. And really the part that I'm interested in is down the open locations by, open tickets by location group. Because what I want to get a sense of is how often these things are getting, needing to be repaired and how often it's, they're needing to be repaired to the extent that parents are having to replace them.
I think you're gonna find some interesting information in our repair sheets, our help desk report. It's very telling that you can see where the damage is happening. Generally speaking, our middle school kids are the roughest. But that's not always the case.
Can you explain the colors? Because I think one's the second one and one's the first one, but I'm not sure which color is which.
I'm not sure.
If you look at the bottom of eight, page eight, it says B, computers, printers, and then it kind of warranty service request. And then B, computers. I'm not sure what those colors represent. I think I know.
Yes, there's the graph at the bottom. Oh, it doesn't show it all. I'm sorry.
That's what I'm saying. That couldn't be the whole thing.
Basically, the, the blue is the basic warranty service. So it was a first damage. It was something major, maybe a cracked screen, maybe damage to the base of the laptop. And usually the second one is more peripheral stuff. Maybe it was software and things like that. So we have it listed in three categories. The initial opening of a ticket, that's when the student reports it and fills out their recollection of what happened to the device. And then after the technician looks at it, they have two days. It usually doesn't take that long. It then goes into a pending state if it has to go over to our HP repair techs. We have one located in-house north of the Broad and one south of the Broad. And then it goes from, the third category is closed ticket. So that would be all the tickets. And then I broke it out into two sheets, one north of the Broad and one south of the Broad. And we can plainly see that our middle schools generate the most tickets.
So if you don't mind me just buttoning in here, on page 12, for example, I think it's page 12. Yeah, page 12. The heading says, computers, printers, boards, time clocks, other hardware greater than B1. Computers, iPads, greater than laptops, student HP. And then the other one says warranty service request. So is the second column where parents are actually paying to have the device repaired?
No, the first one would be.
So there were, so for example, Ladies Island Middle School has 273 families that are having to pay to replace a peripheral, a laptop, a time clock.
Not necessarily. These are tickets that came in. So it could be that they were having issues with their Gmail. They were having issues with a piece of software. They were having issues logging in. Kids tend to have a lot of issues when it comes time to take tests. So sometimes a lot of problems happen with those devices when a child does not want to do something. So a lot of times that first category can be a little higher because it's going through our ticketing process. But it might not have been anything catastrophic.
And then the second one specifically says warranty service request. What does that mean?
So that would be it went to our HP authorized. So it either had a screen replaced or the, the base unit of the device replaced. Maybe they ripped off the keys and the keyboard was replaced. So it was something that physically had to go to our HP repair tech and he ordered a piece of part for it.
Because what I'm really interested, one of the things is, you know, now they have, if you look and you look at Savannah Chatham, right? The replacement cost is half of what ours is, for example, right? And one of the reasons you mentioned was that these are made for K through 12. And so they're more expensive to replace. If I, am I recapping that correctly?
Savannah Chatham uses Chromebooks, which is a much cheaper device. They also charge a $50, I guess, warranty or whatever, insurance program. I have to buy it for both of my kids.
Right, I'm just saying, so Chromebooks seem to be becoming more the norm because they are cheaper. And so my question is, when we have, when we have something that's twice the price, is that resulting in fewer breakages? Because that is what the value of it, right?
Well, you've also got to look at the abilities that that piece of hardware can provide. My kids were not able to do Zoom sessions on their Chromebook. I had to provide a laptop during the pandemic for them to do their work. Teachers in Savannah Chatham County could not use their Chromebooks to teach. They had to either use a personal device that they purchased to teach during the school year. So it was very difficult on that district. And that's a district of, I think, 50, 58,000 kids. So it was, it was very hard. Luckily, I had one of my kids on a desktop and the other one on a laptop, so we were able to get through.
I mean, it seems to me from what I've looked at, a lot of districts, I don't know if they've changed that or what, but are doing more Chromebooks. But also I guess that the HP X360 that you can just buy at Best Buy is half the price of what we're charging for an HP because it's a school version.
Yep. One thing I would add to that is on the base price is about $400 and something dollars. We also add absolute software, which is a tracking mechanism. Meaning if somebody steals one of our devices, we have a service that can track it as soon as it touches the internet. And they will help recover it or either reimburse us if they can't. So we do get some of those back through the absolute process. And that service is about $100 and I think $140 per device. So that's another reason why it costs a little bit more. On the Chromebooks, you basically don't have that. If a kid steals the Chromebook, it's gone and you have no tracking mechanism for it. And Chromebooks usually run about $350-ish, somewhere in that name period.
This dovetails into another topic we have on the agenda, which is suitability of the hardware to support new software. So maybe we can drive this discussion that way.
And since our district is, they, we utilize a lot of applications and a lot of applications beyond just the Google environment. And that's one of the benefits we gain by using a Windows laptop is that we can use a lot of programs that are designed for Apple and Windows that we would not be able to use on a Chromebook until they develop the app for it.
Okay.
All right. Are you satisfied? Can we move on from this?
Yes, you can move on. Queen of the universe grants permission to move on.
Off with your head.
All the way done with this topic, but I got more information. Because I'm intrigued by the fact that from my, from my checking around, Chromebooks are much more common. And I'm just curious as to if we're just doing better than people on the one-to-one device, which is great. You know, I'm just, I'm just intrigued by the discussion.
All right. Excuse me.
David, do you want to go ahead and talk about the, about the technology that I brought up as a talking point?
I think we can. I, it varies a little from the agenda, but it, but it dovetails with this conversation.
And Mary and I talked about this briefly at the instructional review at Robert Smalls International Academy late, earlier this week. We were both in the classroom watching our students use our, our devices for their courseware. And it pointed out to me something that I've come across for many years in technology is, is the constant race between the software developer and the hardware developer. And software people want to get the most possible applications and adaptability and colors and movement and pixel qual, you know, exactness. And the hardware people are trying like the Dickens to be able to support that with, you know, the technology in the actual machine to make it happen. What I saw when we were going around is I saw screens that weren't able to display the entire page of the courseware. I saw screens that weren't able to show the colors, which are very, very important. And especially for the younger kids and how they manipulate the courseware. It's a lot of colored and symbol-based that they move around. I saw timing, you know, lag because it was trying to, the system was trying to refresh and so on. So what I saw, and Mary, what did you see?
I'm, I'm gonna build on what Colonel Guyer has shared. And, and maybe I'm looking at this from a lens as well, a little deeper than I should. And Colleen and I had conversation, but I'm, I look at it from perspective of ability to read, ability to have. A child shouldn't have to sit up on top of a computer this close to read it. And I'm nearsighted. I could not read screens. They were foggy. And yes, it may be a setting issue. But the question that I poshed had given the opportunity to provide a higher quality screen for children, especially with the amount of time that generations now are in front of a screen. I started thinking about it, about eyesight, glasses and impact. And then I started thinking about the question of, is there a guideline, Mark, maybe, and I mean this respectfully to ask you, of what should be the pixel rating at a minimum for developmentally appropriate for children?
You know, excuse me. One of the biggest things we, we looked at when we were deciding on which screen to go for because you have a bright glossy screen that shows every pixel in the world. It's the most vivid, it's beautiful, but these are touchscreen devices. The kids touch them with grubby hands all day. They're very dirty. A bright screen reflects all ambient light, which creates eye strain and fatigue for long periods of using devices. We also took into account that kids use these devices in varying environments. They could be outside, they could be inside. And especially with our buildings, pretty much any of our classrooms at different times of the day will have sun streaming through the windows that will bounce back off of these screens. That was the main reason we went with a matte screen because research has shown that it's better for the children's eyes. One thing we could look at is possibly a bigger screen. Colonel Guyer said that not all the page was displayed. So that is definitely something we could look at.
You know, I, I've got an iPhone 13 and it's unbelievable the difference in the quality, just based on that technology in that phone. Even, and I replaced it with a 12. So that's, my issue was, you know, we have a fleet management issue. We obviously can't replace all our screens and all our computers at one time. But we have to manage it like you manage a fleet of vehicles. You know, you, you manage trucks different than you manage cars. And as we go ahead, and I'm not saying, please don't get me wrong, we gotta scrap it all and start all over. And I'm not saying that at all, but I'm saying to Mark and to the technology people, it's a fleet management plan with allowing us to project what we're going to need, when we're going to need it, and when it makes the best sense to start to rotate in new technology. And who gets it first? And, and you know, the, the screen quality, the size quality, the ruggedness, obviously is all you have to, you have to care for. But it's not, it's not serendipity. It needs, it needs to be something that's a, that's a plan. It needs it needs to be something that's a that's a plan that you say, okay, we don't know the specifics, but this is what we anticipate. And this is where we where we plan to go and we constantly update it as the technology changes. Does that make sense, Mark?
Absolutely, sir.
So Dick, does this dovetail into our J thing, uh update on technology assessment planning? I mean, that's what I think that's where.
It it does. It does. Uh, that that's a different scope of of an issue because that that goes into network and and all other things. But this for this hardware, this user interface. You know, I think what we saw and it was very clear to me when I walked into those classrooms and it was nice in Robert Smalls because we saw middle school and we saw elementary school. And I saw different programs being used on the screen by different students. And frankly, I thought that when I saw the what the uh middle school folks were using, I thought it was perfectly adequate. But I saw what Mary saw with the with the reading learners and a lot more touchscreen action, whereas the middle school use a lot more keyboard, for example. And 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 so on. So that's that's why uh I brought that up and 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 talked to Dr. Stratus about that while we were at the instructional review.
Well, and this also ties into the idea, like, you can't have everything, right? You can't have the cheapest computer that breaks. So um one of the things that I think would be great with our OE seventeen and with sort of a policy board view is what is what's the important points? Like if we go to reorder equipment, you know, looking at Windows space versus Google Chromebooks, looking at the screen size for elementary school and then making sure that we look to see if that once they're implemented, did we achieve those goals? Because we can't, we we there's no perfect solution. So you're it's a balancing and a compromise. Um, and I know that I wanted to bring up, I think they're getting ready to refresh or reorder all the middle school um devices, I think. So do we have, do we know, like, when we reorder, here's the software we are now using. We bought a bunch more software, right? Um, and here's the goals for middle school. Here's what's important at this stage. Here's how the kids are. We know how they're using. And here's our breakage, you know, all these different things. So we when we, I don't know if we're just automatically going to order the same books or looking at bringing in new hardware.
Um, basically with our four-year um life cycle update, um well, of course, middle school is right now in its uh its fourth year. So uh they're they're having the uh the oldest devices um that also does increase some of the the damage or breakage from them, um because they have been used pretty hard for four years. Um, every year we purchase computers, we do get higher processors. Um, we evaluate the RAM needed. Um, so we used to put, you know, four gigs of RAM in a computer. Now we're putting eight. Uh, it's not going to be long. You know, in our Kate devices, we have to put sixteen. So we do evaluate it based on the software that we're going to be using. Um, and we do spend time with ISD figuring out what they're using and analyzing where the software they're using is going. Because every year as it changes or as they make updates, there are more hardware requirements for it that we take into consideration. But every year we're getting a higher processor and we're examining the RAM. We've also switched from um standard spinning drives to SSD drives, which put about five times the capabilities on the machine. So we've seen great benefits with that.
And they're more reliable.
Absolutely.
Can um or in I don't know if the X, the HP X three sixties, can you upgrade the RAM after the fact or not? I know Chromebooks you can't. That's one of the downsides.
Um, yes, you can change out the sticks. Generally speaking, for our life cycle, we very rarely find reason to. Usually by the time the life cycle is over, we're we're getting that next generation that that we can build in those uh hardware specs. But yes, we can upgrade RAM and some of the characteristics of the device. It's generally a lot more expensive to do it after the fact.
And you you really have to keep up with speed. RAM is one thing, but speed is another because the software developers uh put so much more in there. You gotta crank through it faster. So.
Well, that's what I'm thinking is if we are introducing new programs at the beginning or middle of a cycle and we're finding that the machines can't keep up, sounds like the HPs you could go in and upgrade, you know, some of those uh processors or RAM to make them better.
Well, the RAM you can.
Yeah, for the laptops, the chips are built into the board, so we would not be able to do a chip upgrade.
Yeah, I as I was saying that, I was trying to take it back. It's just one of those terms you throw around. We talk about computer hardware processors. Um, but I know like my son just built his computer and it's amazing the parts you can take out and upgrade and not have the but I mean, the the laptop itself is just a box, you know, not not these ones, but some of the desktops.
Again, this has been a this is a fundamental issue that's been around forever where, as someone pointed out, the software developers write to the latest chip. And so, you know, they're in a conspiracy with the hardware people to get you to buy the latest chip. You know, I I don't think it's a cabal where they sit down and talk about it, but that's always been the case, you know? Uh, software developers, it it's just part of their DNA that that they 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 aim for the the highest capacity they can get. So that, you know, this issue has been around a long, long time. Alright, so what's the next step on this one? Is there one?
I I really believe that it's it's just a matter of having technology and ISD talk together about what the requirements, because you know, the the ISD people are reading all the journals. And all the journals come in and say, oh, the next thing that's gonna happen. And and the IS, the technology people, they're reading Wired and seeing what is there. And they have to come together and say, okay, here's what we think. Here's what you think. Let's let's amalgamate that into a tentative plan. You can't have a planned class casting concrete in technology. It's got to be something that's constantly reviewed and talked about, and it's an evolutionary process. And so as long as, and and I think a a comprehensive simplistic briefing to the board for them to understand why we are using our funds the way we are with the eight percent, the refresh, how we're how we are planning to keep up with this and cope with this issue would be very, very helpful, not only for the board, but also for the public that's generally not very tech savvy, to understand in simple terms why we spend the amount we spend to give the products that we need to get our kids ready to be uh successful adults in the twenty-first century.
And I agree with that a hundred percent. I think two things, though. I think that what we can next step to to David's question. What I would love to see is, especially as someone who's interacting in the community, the goals of the tech, you know, we buy stuff. What were the goals and how do we achieve them? And so when you hear from parents that they can't read the whole screen, you know, knowing what the decisions were, et cetera, and being able to articulate and explain that and then have that feedback go into the next refresh cycle. And then the second thing is, our students are tech savvy. Our student, you would be amazed at what they know that they are way ahead of where we are. So the parents may have, you know, maybe getting a step in wondering, the the kids are doing more than we understand with these with devices in general. So um I think that's part of the problem is making sure we're meeting their expectations. Their figure, I mean, my son put together his own computer with watching YouTube videos. You know, I didn't have a thing to do with it and he just wanted, it was his birthday thing. He ordered all the parts off Amazon, assembled it, built it himself, you know, and at fourteen with because of YouTube videos. So it is, it's it's amazing what's out there.
Alright, so we need to look cool to the students. And and we need to, we need to look like we're on top of things and that we actually are reading the journals. Um, got that part. I agree with Dick. An update, because the the numbers that come for technology are raise eyebrows for the for the constituents, for the public. They see those big numbers and they, holy cow, millions of dollars on on. So it would be a really helpful if we would get an understandable explanation, which you're really good at, Mark. Um, an understandable explanation of why we chose these, which goes back to what Ingrid was saying. You know, why we chose this hardware and software and, you know, the capabilities that it provides and without getting too technical, because you know, we want to understand, we want to speak to the audience and the audience really is the constituents, the taxpayers, the people that vote for those referendums. Um, you know, that's the audience. We have to make sure it's um digestible by that audience. And as I say, you're you're good at that, Mark. So we just need to um think that through and somehow get it on an agenda in the future um so that you can do that. I think that's a great idea. Alright, I think we're done with this topic.
Yeah, I thought you did a great job of pulling it all together and putting a bow on it.
Go ahead, Tanya.
Um, I just want, I'm always looking at our OE document and uh this would fit very nicely in OE seventeen point five. Um, it is receive recommendations regarding techno- technological innovations that could be integrated in district, in the district and plans for transition of existing technologies. So um the interpretation is that we understand this to mean receiving input from teachers, staff, students, community members uh regarding current and future technologies in the facing the district. So I think it fits very well in there. It doesn't really fit on the schedule, the monthly schedule in place because it was technically uh 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 set for October, but we could switch it up a bit and do this one, you know, now or as soon as the allow, as soon as we are able to gather that information. And then um uh switch it up with another one that was scheduled for this month.
I like it.
Good. Thanks, Frank, for us. Um, yeah, I was suggesting the spring sometime that we do this. Um, and then again, if we're gonna go out for a referendum in twenty-three, uh again, at a at a good time so that it's not forgotten before that referendum.
Well, and to your point too, eight percent, when we do the eight percent projects, because that's a growing chunk of our eight percent projects right now. But it's up to it's up to twenty-five percent of our eight percent project spending.
Alright, let's uh get to the next item is new software selection. And I'm not sure what what the focus of this is, so. Uh, I'm not sure where it came from. Alright, update on technology. Update on technology staffing is the next item, and that's just an update. Where are we? How many openings do we have and are we happy?
I'm happy to say we went from four openings. Uh, we're down to two. We have one at Ladies Island Middle, a tech one, and we have, um and that was due to that technician being promoted up to a tech two at the knock. And then we still have one tech two position open at the knock.
So all the schools are covered.
Except for Ladies Island Middle. They just lost their technician back to the district office, yes.
We slide someone in there in the interim to to cover any issues.
Yes, we have the North of the Rod Supervisor covering that. He's a rotating staff and covering it himself to uh to make up for the shortfall.
Great. Update on technology assessment RFP is the next item and that uh. Okay, um, who who is that? Is that? Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, I just want to mention real quickly, the uh job description information was provided uh to Robin. She has a folder in her office that has that available, make any, an available board member who wishes to view that. So I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. That that slipped my mind. But uh, yeah, we didn't want to discuss it in a public forum, but it is available to to us. So that was where we landed on that one, if that's okay with the other committee members. Uh, you take a look at it and if there is something jumps out, then but we just, we don't want, even though I think that it's there's it's a foggy area about discussing positions and salary. It's foggy whether that is public information or not public information. Um, and I know Mr. Dowling knew which which uh court case it was, and I can't remember it, but it had something to do with the Columbia Columbia Fire Department. Horton versus Columbia Fire Department. So that it's it's foggy, but we're gonna err on the cautious side and uh the folders are available if you wanna view them. That is the, that's the question. This silence is not helpful.
I've got a leaf blower going on. So you, what would you say about the RFP? That's the question?
The question is, hey, we have an RFP. Is it out on the street? Have we gotten any response to it? And uh, you know, what's what's the status of the request for proposal?
Is that for the um the assessment?
Yeah, yes, that's. So it's a procurement issue now.
I wasn't sure. I thought maybe it was some sort of broad RFP we're talking about. We're talking about the the technology assessment. Okay, good.
So.
Mark or Tanya, do you know? Do you know the status or? Or have you not been told?
Uh, I'll I'll speak. The uh the RFP is not yet out on the street. The scope of work has to be finalized. We've gone back and forth, uh gotten input from uh from other RFPs. We have gotten input from the technology staff and we have one more review to do and it will be on the street. Um, my goal is to have it out before Thanksgiving.
Alright, so you can count on this item being on the next agenda. Awesome. Uh, we're just a quick update. Okay, uh, our next item is update on broadband. Um, and I guess that's uh connected to our uh community partner involvement and the county council's involvement and whoever else we're trying to work with.
And we didn't have a lot of big movement on it this past month. Um, we're still waiting for a meeting with Hargray. Unfortunately, the times to get everybody together uh was not very convenient over the last couple of weeks. There's been a lot going on. Um, we're hoping to have that meeting with Hargray uh first week of Dec- uh first two weeks of December before we go out on break uh to get their input on it, since we've already talked with the county and we've talked with the Palmetto Rule Telephone Cooperative. Um, we would like to get Hargray's opinion and their thoughts on it also because they're our primary provider and one of the primary providers for Beaufort County.
So where um is the, or where we, that's talking about adding infrastructure to areas and fiber where there is not, right? That's what Hargray is talking about. So I, you know, I talked to Mark about this separately, but I actually accidentally ended up having a conversation with Jim Strizzinger um up at uh the head of the new regional broadband office, and he used to live on Hilton Head. His kids went to Hilton Head Middle and Hilton Head High. So he actually is fairly interested in what's going on in this area. Um, and one of the things he told me is that to use federal funding, it has to be one hundred twenty. You can't do twenty-five-three um to the different areas, which is neither here nor there, because I think that's what they're doing. Uh, but the other thing that I thought maybe we could talk about here, or at least start having the conversation is beyond infrastructure, there's like Hilton Head has infrastructure throughout the island. Everyone can be connected to uh wi- uh fiber according to the uh the maps. And uh but there's affordability, isn't also is is the next thing. And one of the things that's interesting is there's like four things you need for um broadband adoption. You need the infrastructure. You need end user device, which since we're a one-to-one district, all our students have a device. You need digital literacy. People need to know how to use their device, and then you need affordability. And that's something where maybe the school district could play a larger role is saying we already. is saying, we already have one-to-one devices. So we should have some, I mean, personally, I would love to see some sort of commitment that we make sure that every student has access to, has brought access to broadband. And he suggested, one of the ways he's looking at is through a subscription. Has anyone talked about that, doing something like that through the schools? Is that a no?
Can you repeat the last bit of that? I think you said subscription.
Yeah, so that he's suggesting or has talked with other districts about a model for students that's a subscription model that would be covered on a sliding scale by some government authority, possibly, you know, the schools, the county, whatever, the state, where every student gets broadband based on their ability to pay. And it's similar to what you get. He described it to me and I'm not as up on it as I think other people are. But like when you go to a hotel, you can access different levels of Wi-Fi. You log in with your room number, et cetera. You don't have to have, they basically have wireless access points that broadcast a signal that you can subscribe to. So I didn't know if anyone had talked about this at the school level.
No, we've worked with partners for discount programs with Comcast, with Hargray, with our different providers in the area. But that's been the extent of it, working on reduced cost plans for families.
I, I'm not sure that the school district is going to take on the burden of subsidizing. Because the government's already moving in that direction.
That's what I'm saying. I don't necessarily think it has to be schools to do it, but part of it is if we're going to start this lawn blow, leaf blower is right here. Part of the issue is if we're going to start offering like a cybersecurity program and we, the kids don't have access to decent broadband. It's setting us up for failure, in my opinion. So I don't know, we have some funding in the short term, you know, or maybe some funding through that pilot program. But I don't know if that's a model that anyone's considering for areas that sorry, that do have, already have the infrastructure, but still do not have access. Like we still need to get it to the home.
All right. Yeah, let's continue that when we get down to the cybersecurity. I know, I agree with you. It's something we need to discuss, but I think it's, it's applicable to what we have listed as M, discussion of technology and cybersecurity.
You know, the county is taking a leap on the infrastructure piece, and I think Whale Ranch and some of those areas really need the infrastructure built in. They're some of the high target areas for the regional office. But I think that beyond that, as a school district, even areas where there is access, we still have kids who don't have broadband. And so it's something I think the schools can not take the lead in terms of paying for it, but possibly be more of a voice for that group.
Agree completely. Mr. Smith?
Oh, yeah. My question was going to be in terms of the broadband. I was at a meeting not long ago and what I, what I learned at the meeting was that there were, there were, there was, there was a code that they gave out and that they would like for people to have their kids and different people to type in this code. And it will, and it will tell the, well, how much broadband is in the area. And I was wanting to do, did a certain thing about that. And I will be familiar with that. And it was something that, it was something that the county council was presenting.
Does the name UCLA sound familiar?
Um, that is a service that the state has been using with UCLA or whatever the name of it. UCLA is a speed, a broadband speed testing website. And every time you use it, they mark down the coordinates of where that test originated from and it's stored in a database. And the state has been using that database to, or that information to create first, a wired map of the state of South Carolina. And now they're expanding that to complete a a wireless one for more detail. And they were hoping to have that finished up by, I think, the end of this year. That was last I heard, so it might be early twenty twenty-two. But yes, we have heard of that. And it's basically just a speed test website. It's nothing intrusive.
Good. Earl?
Well, will that, will that something good for our parents, students to know, to force to use in the district as well?
It's more of a one-time thing. Once you run the, it's about a minute and a half scan. And it does a quick test of the download and upload speed of your broadband connection. And it's a one-time thing.
Earl?
I was just going to say that in a northern province, like there's nothing up here to, 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 to help students. I know we've been talking about this the last two years. And I know Dr. Rod Lewis have talked to some of the the companies. But CenturyLink seems to be not willing to do anything. You know, Hargray is, is. No, no. So I don't know what we need to do.
I think we need to make it profitable for CenturyLink. Yeah. I mean, you know, we have CenturyLink here on, on the island and it's, it's not a reliable service, but.
Majority of people up here in this area is CenturyLink. And they, they don't want to discuss it, period.
So David, I'm going to make you mad because this is not policy, this is philosophy. But Mr. Campbell, I agree and I don't, we can't make it profitable. But James Stranzinger, he is using the model that FDR used for rural electrification, the Rural Electrification Act, which basically said, you know, that every, there are forty-three percent of rural farms had electricity in nineteen forty-three, I think it was, forty-six. And he said, that's not acceptable, but the private companies wouldn't do it unless they were pressured by public interest, by public benefit, right? And so basically what he said was in order to produce crop output during a depression, you needed to have the farms electrified. And I think this is an area where the school can put some pressure because we can't offer job creation programs. We can't offer technology. We can't get remote workers to come work here, which they just spent money on that South Coast cyber college or whatever they're calling it without broadband. And basically, I think there is a lot of impetus. Jim Clyburn put, recommended Mr. Stranzinger. There is a lot of interest in getting to these rural areas despite the fact that there is no way to make it profitable. Because these roads are long and these, these are not people that can afford thousands of dollars to install fiber. But I do think this is where the school district can come in and put pressure on because they can say, look, we've got students that have the opportunity to learn cyber skills, to learn digital technology, to improve the digital literacy, which is essential for the next twenty years, you know, for, for their future. And we can't do that unless there is a moral imperative to put broadband in. And so I think that is kind of the tact that needs to be taken and we, there's no way to make it profitable. We have to make it a moral imperative. And so, so sorry, David, I know I got way off the agenda and the policy.
Well, no, and you know, I hear your moral imperative and I understand your analogy. A better analogy is telephone service. Rural telephone service is subsidized. And that's why the telephone companies laid the lines and it wasn't a moral imperative. They, they had to get subsidized. So somewhere, somewhere on that spectrum is where we're landing, but I agree with you. We need to put pressure on people. I would love it if a moral imperative had any strength to it, but lately, I'm not sure moral imperatives really are doing a very good job. Sorry for that diversion.
They're making a comeback, David.
I, I hear you. I hear you. And you know, we, what we can do is, is, is put pressure on people and we can run our argument. But I think at the end of the day, the feds are going to end up subsidizing.
Yeah, that's what they're, that's what all this funding is for.
And that's, that's why they're gonna, they'll lay the cable when that money comes in. Because, you know, companies don't exist for for society's benefit. They, they exist for the stockholders. That's their job. It's not, it's not a moral problem for them. That's their job. That's what they're supposed to do. They're supposed to make a profit.
And that's what FDR said. He's like, we can't, this is not a profitable issue. Therefore, we're going to subsidize it. He actually subsidized it through loans that were guaranteed by the federal government. But basically, that's the thing. We're getting all this money, you know, from, through the schools, through the municipalities, through the state, through the county. The big push is, you know, broadband. People need to recognize that broadband is like electricity now. It is essential to modern life. It is not a nicety and it's not for streaming Netflix. It's for healthcare. It's for education. It's going to improve academic achievement in lower income areas. It's going to improve maternal rate mortality in lower income areas. So I, I agree. I don't think we demand that private companies do it. I think we say, you're not capable of doing it. And we got to put a lot of pressure on, on, you know, government doesn't work particularly fast and, and give them a sense of urgency about it. We just, we're going to spend twelve million dollars in grant money on a cybersecurity program in an area with thirty percent broadband. You know, that's a moral imperative. We can give them the skills. We can give them the device, but if you don't give them broadband, it's, it's not going to be enough. And I'll get off my Queen of the Nevers.
And we can also convince them that it will help them get reelected.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, you know, we, we can discuss this amongst ourselves, but and, and, and the community have been pushing and talking to county council for the past several years. And some folks in the state. But you have folks that look at the infrastructure thing that this passed every day. Only one representative from the state of South Carolina voted for it. Everybody else voted against it. You know? The lady from, that represents this area, Mays, she complained about flooding in Charleston. Well, yes, she voted against the bill, you know, so the, the only way anything is going to change and change the benefits to students, especially in the rural area is going to, will have to walk these people out. You know, it, it, it's, it's ridiculous, the things that goes on in this country. They don't care about, 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 about everybody as long as they get elected. And that's, that's, that's sad. Thank you.
All right. Discussion of hardware upgrades. I think we covered that already. Did we not, Dick? I think this is yours, right?
Yes, we did.
I think we covered that. So let's go on to the technology courses, cybersecurity pilot. How's the pilot going? And then then Ingrid has a question as to, you know, how do we expand that to the entire district? And if we do expand it to the entire district, how do we make sure we have the hardware support and the broadband support? So I guess we start with how's the pilot going? Out at Whale Branch? That's a toss-up question.
I, I know they did very well in their first competition, their capture the flag competition. I don't have the results in front of me, but I, I know they did fairly well in the first competition.
What program were they worth? Was that Cyber Patriot or?
Cyber Patriots, yes, ma'am.
So how long is it going to take before all the high schools can have that?
I would rather have Ms. Gilbert, Ms. Gilbert would like, wanted to address this, this committee, maybe in late Janu- our January meeting. But she has some great topics to discuss on it. And she could better state how it's going. The hardest part is just getting the instructors at the school and implementing the, the new programs into the schools. I think she's got a plan for it and we would love to see it go through more of our high schools.
Yeah, so this is my, one of my questions because I was at this conference and they were talking about, you know, one in twenty jobs now is cyber defense in the country. Five percent of the workforce, forty-two percent of the, of jobs will be either related to cybersecurity or data analyst in the next five years. And so I feel like, again, I feel a sense of urgency. If it's going well at Whale Branch, and I think we have a strong military JROTC program at most of our schools. I think we should have that by this time next year. You know, this is a fall competition, the Cyber Patriot. But you do all your registering and some of your teamwork stuff in the spring. I mean, I would like to see this in pretty much every high school that has a JROTC at least next, for the next fall. I mean, it's just, it's just critical to what's going on in the workforce right now.
I understand you though, is this pilot was, was linked not to JROTC, but to military families?
No, that's the DOD grant. This is a Cyber Patriot. Sorry. Is that, was, was I, Cyber Patriot? Anyway, in fact, you know, I'm looking at doing it with a, a community organization. If we can't get it in the schools, it's, they have, they have other versions of it, but it is basically, you know, just a competition like a sports league and it can go through ROTC. That's like the natural fit for it. But you can do it with Boy Scouts of America, Boys and Girls Club. You can do it at homeschool. And it's just, it's awesome. It's an awesome program. And I think the skill set's so necessary. So I don't want to, if the pilot's going well, just roll it out. That's my thought.
All right, Barry.
It's also having the sponsors to pick that up. I think that is why they were trying to build capacity and momentum. We were able to get a pilot rolling up at Whale Branch. Colonel Warren, Warren Parker, actually is a big supporter here in the north end of the county. He brought it to our attention. We would like to have it grow, but again, it is by sponsorship to go ahead and say to integrate it directly into ROTC. I'm just going to give you a pushback that if they don't want to do it as a natural fit, they'll push back and say that their curriculum doesn't, you know, just because I've dealt with ROTC in a polite way. So there's a way of integrating so that our ROTC sees the benefits as you've put forward so that they are part of it. So I think like Mark said, let's come forward with Karen because she's been working on a plan. And I know it's a cyber security is a big push here in the north end and there's a team that have written a, here in the north end a a curriculum that they're trying to develop their own little cyber private school world. And so we need to be competitive. You're right.
No, there's a, there's a, I know in Hilton Head, I, and I just bring that up because that's who I talk to. That's who I hang out with. There's a lot of community interest in doing it. And in my opinion, if the school doesn't do it, other groups will step in quickly because with the cyber south or what is it, South Coast, something. One question I have, does it have to be, if we're going to do it through the schools, which is where I think we should do it because we have a much higher likelihood of capturing a more diverse and equitable participation rate. If we do it through the schools, does a teacher have to, can, can a community member be a sponsor?
Yes and no. So technically, you still have to have a district person be there with our students unless that principal actually lends for that allowance. And that even goes to almost all groups. If we had an outside community coming in to do some type of work, we should have by all practices, a district employee tied to them. So that's also a stipend scenario, but there's also the opportunity of looking at better integration into our computer science courses. So I think that's a cleaner approach, but it takes time to get those teachers to onboard as well. So because it's a great opportunity as well as going to the cyber, oh my God, it's outside of Augusta.
Yeah, the, the Cy- Cyber Academy or something?
Yeah, Colonel Guy may know, or Mrs. Trubinger, the proper name. But the cybersecurity site at, at the military base, they actually go, they get, students get to go there and have a full tour.
Well, I know some of those areas around there also do summer programs. You know, which would be great, but yeah, so what you're talking about when having a district person there, that's more for building security than actually having to sit there and because there are retired military and retired tech people here who would do it, who would sponsor it. And if I could link them up like with ROTC and they're already after school doing something else, I mean, I don't know.
Yes.
Let's do this. Let's, let's fit Karen Gilbert at the next meeting if we, if she's, if she's ready. And then we can have this discussion with her and she can lay out her vision. And then we can see what we need to do to support that. And, you know, including getting community members in if we can and but let, let's let her give us the vision.
Okay.
I don't mean to strong arm everybody. I'm just trying to make sure we get through this agenda. I don't mean to strong-arm everybody. I'm just trying to make sure we get through this agenda.
David, I think you're doing an awesome job and you keep people on track and you bring things to a good point and I. It is a bad habit of mine that I get on tangent, so bring me in anytime.
Well, I've dealt with other queens.
Just straighten my crown.
And so I kinda understand. Okay, discussion of future topics. Now we have on here now already that we're gonna bring Karen Gilbert in. We're gonna get another update. Um, geez, I forgot what we're getting updated on. There was something we said, okay, next month, we're gonna get another update.
Computer labs?
RFP.
And the RFP, yes ma'am. It's so good that you're here, Robin, to fill in the gaps I that I have. Um. Okay, anything else on future topics?
David?
Go ahead.
I was thinking about uh another piece of technology we haven't talked about. But that is our internal communications, our radio systems and our cell phones. And we have district cell phones. It would be uh something that should be. We should get an overview, what, but where, who's got the cell phones? Do we have one contract? Uh, how many cell phones? Uh, the internal radio systems, I know that we've, we put uh new antennas up. To have a kind of a a radio network diagram of where are the, where are the transmitters and and so on. Uh, that would be a a very good overview uh to let the board know about. That piece of technology, the electromagnetic uh spectrum.
Now, Mark, would that be you or Robert?
Mark, you're on mute. You're on mute, Mark.
Thank you. Um, yes, I would probably give that. Um, I would just need to get with Robert to, I work with him on how many buildings he's getting done. Um, he comes back and lets us know when he gets the repeaters in place so that we can get the uh the new radios out to the schools. Um, but yes, I could give something on that. Um, and also the cell phones, that would be a fairly easy one to discuss.
I I would like to, um, and I don't know if this is appropriate, so David, I fully expect you to 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 block this congestion. I'm I'm relying on you. Um, but I've, you know, one of the things that I'm looking at as a precursor to the Cyber Patriot or similar program is esports. And May River High School has an awesome esports program that gets college scholarships and they, you know, the whole bit. So I had talked to Mr. Schouhan about what is the hardware requirements perhaps, because they have to go on a on a different network and there's some other stuff. Um, in terms of expanding esports. And in addition to which, when I was talking to the coach of the esports uh program at May River, he was saying that um. One of his, his dream is to have the South Carolina High School League recognize esports as a legitimate sport. Most states already do. South Carolina is behind in doing that. Um, so I don't know if that's something the technology committee could spearhead and look into, because I basically I'm saying is, is it realistic or possible to start offering esports at all high schools? Um, and possibly middle schools as well. I would start with high schools and and come down. And then, you know, is there any uh thing that we could do as a district to help facilitate discussions with the high school league? Uh, because they are, there, there's a, I mean, as having a son in college who's is a gamer. Um, it's a big deal at colleges, their scholarships, the kids, the international kids in particular go to these competitions. So I think it'd be something that, you know, would be worthwhile looking into. It's not on our OE anywhere.
Right, you anticipated, you anticipated what I was gonna say.
Um, and. Well, how about ensure continued engagement with technology, not broadband expansion? I feel like I can come up with something.
Yeah, it's kinda like the Bible. You can find something in there if you look hard enough. Um.
Right on Peggy Torrey.
Would that come under Robert, uh being over? You know, sports, uh, I'm not sure where that would start. Mary?
Yeah, well, Robert no longer is tied to the athletics. It's now is fallen under Student Services under. Um, Dr. White, who is directly under um Dr. Bradley. So part of that is yes, it would fall under athletics to be postured for a conversation, research, yes. And it would fall under Dr. White. She's our officer for Student Services, sir.
Okay, that seems to be the one where we should, where we should start. For that agenda item, make sure that we get uh Dr. White into. To put us on the road in the right way. Okay. Uh, I do not see any other hands. Go ahead. I don't see any hand.
I was gonna say, my bad, yeah. I was that and then that prob- that topic probably would call him, come under facilities. And that probably will come to, will come to the operations committee, possibly.
Yeah, well, we're gonna put it on a future topic uh for this committee and then if we need to bounce it over there, we will.
Okay.
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 Alright, we'll get the groundwork laid and then.
I can't convince my husband to get engaged on esports because he's a, you know, small towns, uh, South, South Georgia boy, but I'm telling you, esports. Is a huge part of the future for college kids. I mean, it's these kids that are at Northwestern, they compete in international tournaments, they're ranked, they sign autographs. Like they, in in a lot of these schools, like Northwestern, like UC Berkeley where my kids go. They are, they have status like quarterbacks of football on the football team. And so for the fact that it just drives me crazy that South Carolina is like, nope. But I get it.
Well, there's no protein. Um, okay.
There are tons of proteins, David. I will send you a list of proteins.
Yeah, send me a list, because you know, they don't show up on my uh sports feed.
Hundreds of thousands of dollars at these tournaments, as millions of dollars in a few of them.
Wow, of course, I didn't know that there were professional um hot dog eaters. I I just found out that there are people who go around to these hot dog eating contests and that's their job.
And they're skinny.
And they're, and they're skinny, yeah, yeah, except for that one hour. Um, but yeah, there's all these things going on that I'm not aware of.
All right, I'm gonna send you guys stuff about esports. You you'll see the money, the 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 participation in the younger generation.
All right, you're our connection. Uh, all right. Can we adjourn? Anyone object?
No, I think this was, this was a great meeting. I learned a lot. Love it.
We're on time and now we have thirty minutes to get organized for the finance meeting.
Thanks, David.
Thank you.